All right, it's seven oh one. For a selectmen's board, I do have two added agenda items. I'd like to add under. Both under new business, the agenda items G and H. Agenda item G would be FY twenty three supporting first grants. That's a grant that the town received from T E C D. And then what would be each would be discussion of the letter parameters. I've had that motion, please. Is there a second?
Second.
Yes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'd also like to, for the, for the record note that we will be holding on agenda items eight D. And nine A, we're still waiting on additional information necessary for that. I have a, a motion to postpone those two items, please.
I'll move we postpone agenda items eight A, especially when we're home eighteen, eighteen.
Sorry. And nine A.
Oh, nine A, I'm sorry. Eight D, discussion of permit length proposal for development of land use and nine A town property inventory.
Motion has been made in seconded in discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I think that brings us to the regular course. We are going to take a couple of things out of order though for scheduling purposes. But I want to start off with the pledge allegiance and I'll add flagging more heavily. All members of the board of selectmen are here, present. We're going to do something a little bit out of the normal course of order tonight. I want to recognize a young man whose dad brought this to my attention. And it is, it is a really cool story. So I've got just a couple of comments I want to make and then we'll bring down Mr. Arts and his family up for presentations and photos. But Kyle Arts is a local thirteen year old boy who is in his second year participating in the October saves charity fund grade. In his first year working for this great cause, Kyle raised twenty one hundred dollars for, for cancer research. This is, um, this is what the description of his donation page had to say. I'm going to read it for them before moving on. I'm excited to join, this is Peter Kyle's words. I'm excited to join this incredible initiative. This organization's mission is very important to me and I'm proud to help them make a difference. My journey against cancer started when I was a very young man. I lost my M M A to pancreatic cancer. This year, I once again play for my two biggest fans. Kathy is my neighbor at camp and she beat breast cancer and is an inspiration to all. As sad as it is, I lost a great friend to cancer this year. Jeff fought a great fight and gave it his all. He would, he always gave me support and motivation and he will never be forgotten. Please support me by giving to my page every dollar it does. So this year, his second year participating in October saves, he raised through his donors an average of thirty four dollars and forty one cents per save. Kyle made two hundred and forty four saves during that period of time and raised eight thousand three hundred and ninety six dollars. For beneficiaries such as the Dina Farber Cancer Institute, the Nova Sharer Cancer Institute, Children's Hospital of Philadelphia and more. That total of eight thousand three hundred and ninety six raised is amazing by itself. But it gets even more amazing when you realize that October saves across North America raised six thousand, or six hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. What that means is that Kyle's contribution is the highest of any participant in Connecticut, the fifth highest of any participant in the country. And his work equates to just shy of one point five percent of the total amount raised by this organization in North America. That is really remarkable. We're all very proud. So with that, on behalf of the town of East Windsor and the board of selectmen, I have a proclamation I'd like to present to you. If you want to come up and bring your parents, if you guys want to do photos, this is, this is kind of the informal portion of our meeting. So please, if you, if anybody wants to come up and join him or take photos, please feel free to do that. So this is a proclamation for the, for the town of East Windsor and it says as follows. Whereas in twenty twenty, nearly two million people will be diagnosed with cancer in the United States. And whereas cancer caused seventeen point eight percent of all deaths in the United States in the year twenty twenty. Whereas October saves is an international five oh one C three charitable organization whose purpose is to raise money for the fight against cancer. Whereas Kyle Arts was the top fundraiser for October saves in Connecticut in twenty twenty two, raising eight thousand three hundred and ninety six dollars. And whereas Mr. Arts was also the fifth highest fundraiser for the organization in the entire country in that same period of time. Now therefore, the town of East Windsor congratulates Kyle Arts for his dedication, kindness and accomplishment through his participation in October saves. And furthermore, be hereby known to all that Kyle Arts has made the entire East Windsor community proud of the good work that he has done in the fight to combat cancer. Given the seventeenth day of November twenty twenty two, we are sincerely proud. If anybody else wants photos, please, this is, we'll take a couple of minutes. What they want to do. I don't know. I went to the screen of camera. So does anybody want to get photos?
Really great job. I didn't know we were having a guest.
Murray, don't hide.
You guys move back. Murray's trying to hide behind John.
No. He wasn't trying.
Look, look at the time Jay's wearing. I mean, come on.
All right, one more. All right, that should give you enough. Very good. So it's been every once in a while to make sure we're doing something that reminds you that there's a whole lot of good in the world and a whole lot of good right here in our community. And I'll thank you for that reminder. Okay, with that, we'll move on to public participation. Is there anybody here in the room who would like to address members of the club? So please state your name and your address, but then once we're done with that, I'll turn to anybody who's online or anybody here present who would like to address the board. Okay, is there anybody online who would like to address the board of selectmen? Okay, there will be another opportunity later on. Our next item of business, so what I'd like to do is take up agenda item six A. And agenda, I, uh, let me find it. Nine D together, they both pertain to the style bridge replaceable project. And Mr. Ludwig Pulaski from the DOT is here with us. And he can explain what it is we're looking at, what the proposal is. And then I'll talk a little bit about what our next steps are in terms of potentially moving forward. So Ludwig, thank you for taking the time to be here. Four is yours. We've got you on the big screen.
Um, yes, thank you for selectmen Bowser and East Windsor Select Board. I truly appreciate the invitation. To come forward and discuss this project with you to replace the bridge on winning one ninety one over the Scantic River. Um, I think I had sent an offer to you on October twenty seventh for two thousand one hundred dollars. The one thing and I hadn't, I'd talked to you about this for selectman Bowser was that money has to be. Used for the public trust according to Connecticut general statutes, three dash one twenty five and forty seven dash two. And I think you and I had already talked about that. Um, the department as part of the bridge replacement. Yeah, requires a one thousand two hundred and eighty seven square foot, what we call it be taking. That means that that would be a portion of land that the part, the department would retain as part of the, uh, the new right away. And then we also will for the duration of the project need, require a nine thousand one hundred and ninety eight square foot construction easement. Uh, I think if you look on the map that was in the packet, that tells exactly what the construction easement is for. I could read it off, but it's kind of long. After the, um, the department is completed with the project, uh, that particular area. I believe is going to be graded and seeded according to the landscaping plan. That's sort of the. That's the Cliff Notes version and I'm certainly open to any questions about the acquisition that anybody has.
One of the things that, um, so, so just for the application of board members and the community. This is a land transaction between town and state. In order to do that, we need to refer this to the planning and zoning commission for an E twenty four referral. It needs to come back from P D C and then we need to send it to a town meeting. Um, but in the interim, one of the things that Mr. Pulaski had offered to do was actually to walk the site with us. If anybody wanted to actually see what we were talking about, but it's at the bottom of Old Ellington Road on the left hand side. Um, and what they need is this, the. Uh, land that he's just describing as part of the swing space and storage area for the replacement of bridge.
The left hand side coming up in the south, right, so the left hand side of going down, going down.
Yeah, the town was deeded a piece of property. By some people. Uh, and I'm not sure what that was all about. There is currently apparently, looks like there's some farming on the town, on the property. As well as there is a driveway way there and I'm not sure if your Department of Public Works is using that or not.
It, that's not us.
Okay, all right.
So any questions or comments? All in. So. I would like to take Ludwig up on his offer to go and walk the site and kind of see, see what they're talking about. He and I can, can coordinate offline and if you guys want to share with me some times, that would be better or, or. If that would work for you, I can make sure that we coordinate with them. Anybody who wants to pay the law. In the meantime, if you guys don't have objections, what I would ask is that we do a referral of the planning and zoning commission under the N S eight dash B four. Um, so that we can start that process and meet his deadline, which is hopefully completing this by the end of the year. Yeah, it's an eight twenty four.
I can motion to allow order, uh, the first one.
Eight twenty four.
Eight twenty four referral.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. So, uh, wait, wait, maybe we can touch base either tomorrow or via email. You can send me some dates that'll work for you.
Um, yeah, I mean, pretty much, uh, I, let me know and I'll do everything I can to clear my schedule. The department wants to convey that we want to do everything to work with the town and make this as seamless a, a project as possible. So at least in terms of the acquisition. So, yeah, let me know what works best, uh, for you and your board and I'll do what I can to accommodate that request.
Fair enough. Thank you, sir.
All right. So I can go now?
Yeah.
Thanks very much and you guys all have a great night.
You too. Okay, that brings us to, uh, reappointments. Um, there was an error in the. Uh, agenda. Mark Simmons is in fact a Republican, uh, and he is a member of the housing authority whose term is up. Um, I hold Mark in very high esteem and, uh, would be delighted to see him continue to serve on the housing authority. Um, may I have a motion?
I'll move to reappoint Mark Simmons as a regular member to the housing authority for a term expiring December first, twenty twenty seven.
Second. Motion has been made in seconded, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and there's reappointed. And Len Norton as the hearing officer of tolling, of tolling and pounding vehicles.
Make a motion that we. Appoint Len Norton, the hearing officer of tolling and pounding vehicles, a regular member for a term expiring November fifth, twenty twenty three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made in seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, okay, new appointments. This is one that had been, uh, before us and then tabled while we were waiting for feedback from the housing authorities tenant association. Um, they did post the opportunity to be the tenant representative on the housing authority for a period of time. And Mary is the only person who came forward and expressed an interest. So, um, that, that jives with both the original submission and what the tenants were, um, hoping to see happen. So I'd asked for a motion to appoint Mary Wise as a regular member of the housing authority, return expiring February first, twenty twenty six.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mary Wise onto the housing authority or a regular member for a term expiring February first, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. And we have a new appointment for the building commission. Mr. Sherry has expressed his willingness to serve. He submitted an application that's in your packet. Any questions? I'm sure he'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'd ask for a, uh, motion to appoint him to the building.
I'll move to appoint Wayne Sherry as a regular member to the building commission for a term expiring August first, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion?
Great, and then you did what's great. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, so carry. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Uh, okay, we're going to go on to Dr. Toodren and a discussion and this also will put Mr. Sauerhoffer, I believe. Um, but there is a, a concept that I raised last week about, um, doing an added appropriation for the H V C engineering work to be done on, um. The each of the three schools in town. Doctor Toodren wasn't able to join us last week and I wasn't able to speak comfortably on, uh, what the grants that he had been to. Stated or required. Um, but as we talked about, um, one of the things that we did have a concern about and, and still remains a concern. Is the quick turnaround between the grant announcement and the need for submission of a fully vetted plan. Um, that fully vetted plan required also, uh, the engineering and the architecture for the H V assistance on the roof, which is not something you can do. In eight or ten, it's eight or ten months. Um, so I'm going to ask Doctor Toodren to kind of explain a bit about what the project entails. Joe can talk to us a bit about, uh, where we, where you expect the cost to be and, um, we'll take it from there.
All right. Uh, yes, absolutely. Uh, good evening. Appreciate, uh, the flexibility as far as, uh, participating virtually. I apologize, I'm not, uh, there in person. Um, so, uh, basically, uh, the projects, um. That we'd like to, uh, consider at some point, and I say some point because, uh, as, uh, the first selectman indicated. Uh, the timeline in which, uh, the grants came out just wasn't, uh, feasible. And, um, we're not alone, um, in that boat. I can tell you, um, there's not one surrounding town that I'm aware of. As far as our school district and municipality, uh, that was able to apply, um, for the grant under the conditions and timeline, uh, that was put out. Um, uh, we have participated in a webinar in which we believe that there will be, um, a second and third. Round of, uh, grant opportunities with this. And just to add, what makes this, uh, grant, uh, somewhat unique is, uh, typically, uh, new construction, um, reimbursement rates do not include H vac. Um, so this is why, um, like this grant that the governor has put out is unique in that case. Uh, but when we did look at the criteria as first selectman had indicated or has indicated. Uh, we basically don't have the designs that would allow us, uh, to, um, essentially, uh, put forward, uh, projects. Uh, so the projects we want to, um, uh, get more information and hopefully, uh, put forward in the future. Are, um, H vac units that would essentially, um, provide, um. Uh, air conditioning to our classrooms and our buildings in addition to our gyms. And also provide the opportunity to recirculate fresh air into the classrooms and also, um, generate additional heat source.
So Patrick, I'm, I'm sorry, just give me one second. I'm going to mute others. Okay, keep going.
Um, so I guess maybe I'll stop there. I mean, is there any specific questions? I mean, certainly I can go into additional, um, details, uh, with the grant that's out right now. Um, or the criteria.
Well, so I'll just, um, add a little bit of color to, to what you said. I, I spoke to the governor directly about this and he did indicate that there would be another round coming. Um, but. We, we won't be eligible for that one either, if we don't have the plans in place to do this. That is a key piece of the application process. Um, so, uh, Joe, have you been able to get up an estimate as to what the, uh, engineering would be on each of those projects or each of the building?
So I spoke to our P M that we hired, well, we haven't signed a contract yet, but we talked to today. And I also reached out to the architect that helped us do the community center. And they're. They're both hesitant to give us an exact price, but, um. I would say we have to be in the range of between two and three hundred thousand, three and four hundred thousand dollars. At least a hundred and between a hundred and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a building. And we're talking about engineering and, I mean, it could be less on the high school because we already have H V A C near funds on the. Someone keeps on muting themselves, yeah. Uh, we already have H V A C units on some of the areas at the high school. And all the new modulars are already have H V A C with fresh air and so. This is a really rough estimate until we hire an architect. We're not gonna, and until they come out and assess, I mean. The, the high school is about a hundred and thirty thousand square feet. And then the middle school is about seventy five thousand and the elementary school is about eighty thousand. But keep in mind, two of the big wings are done, but nothing else is on the elementary school. Same thing with the high school, the, the auditorium, the gym. The, is the new part, the science wing, I would call it. I call it newer because it wasn't there when I was there.
Doug, with the S wing or the D wing?
I don't know. It, it, it's all the old, the old science wing.
If it's, uh. If it's, uh, like if the, the wing that's, uh, like adjacent to, uh, the gym.
No, the wing, no, that's the, that's the old business wing. I know that's got air.
Yeah, that's the only wing that has air in the high school.
So the, 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 the addition that was put in behind the, uh.
The D wing and the old courtyard.
Well, yeah, the old courtyard behind the, the bedroom room, that doesn't have air conditioning.
No, I thought, is it the guidance wing you're referencing?
It's got the one with the dome roof. Next to the softball, the softball field and the batting cage.
No, there's, uh, so there's no air down by that area that you're referencing.
That school's done, the high school, maybe. You know, maybe a quarter of the elementary school because we've got the cafeteria, we've got the modulars on both sides. Uh, we did put some heat pump systems in a couple of the offices. Uh, the principal's office going when we did some alliance grant stuff. It's a heavy number, I know, uh, but I, I certainly don't want to come back and. Tell you guys I need more. Uh, you know, we have enough money in place for the roofs, but again, we might be able to save some money in the roofs. This is an estimate. This goes in an account, whatever we don't use. You know, gets reallocated wherever. So it's, it's parking some money there, a very safe number. You know, and, and it's. You know, I, it's. I don't see them coming in each builders for more than a hundred thousand each.
You don't see it being more than, more than that, but.
You know, I mean. That's my best guess and, you know, it, it's easier for me to guess on stuff that I know about, but there's design factors here. There's electrical factors here, you know, there, there's structural factors, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's going to be built into this. And on top of this. We don't want to do anything in a high school and serve a new roof on.
And these are, um, to that point. The, the H V A C units rest on the roof.
Yeah, I would recommend they all go up on the roof to keep them out of the ground and. You know, there may, you know. The heat pumps work good, but the difference with the heat pumps. The systems that I know and the, the systems we've used in the town, you also have to put in a fresh air system like in this building. There's a fresh air system also added in. If you go with H V A C, they're solid units like you see on the top of the school across the street. That's what we have at the P, police station, you know, but in, in order to do that, you got to put the ductwork in. But, you know, they're, they're long straight roofs, there are wings. You know, they're, they're, you know, we're not talking, there's a lot of bends. My estimation is they'll be able to run a trunk line right down the center on the roof and we'll insulate that trunk line and we'll be able to do it.
So with, given that the roof on the middle school is, is very new, is that, at least, is there the possibility that that drops the engineering costs down on that building? Or are we engineering two different things?
We're engineering two different things. I mean, we know what's there. We know it's a solid roof. We know we don't have to get into any structural, you know, and we know we have a good roof. That would probably be the first school we start because we can literally just start there.
You know, but at the end of the day, we can't even submit for the grants unless we have the engineering on. So they're going, the, the, I'm sorry.
I spoke to. Uh, the P M and he is, there are actually three schools. That he's handling is. Farmington, Oxford. Oxford, Branford, oh, and Norwalk. They already had their stuff together. They're the only ones. That are going, that he knows of, that are going for this December first.
So when's this next round coming up?
Nobody knows.
Yeah, they don't, they don't know yet.
But is this like a year, two years?
It'll be, at, at least annually, it might be in the spring.
So I think my, one of the other things I think we need to think about is we have in most of the schools, single pane crappy windows. And on the C I P list, we have. You know, the, the entry there to, to take care of that. I mean, to me, it doesn't seem like really smart to do the H vac or not do the windows. Not very efficient. So do we move that? Those projects up in the priority list in the C I P? As these. You know, and, and I'm talking, you know, obviously a year or two is probably out before construction happens, but. But like, it doesn't make sense to put H vac in with the old windows. I mean, not that you wouldn't, but like, you don't want to be running those systems without better windows. Uh, for very long, because we're going to be spending, or they're going to be spending a ton of money in electricity. And whatnot to, you know, for the lack of efficiency of those, of those windows, you know?
I remember Dr. Kane was pretty good about wrangling alliance grants for projects like that. So they did, at the elementary school, at least some, uh, uh, window treatments and remediation, uh, the, the bestest glue and all that.
I remember that, but we still have like, like in Broadbrook, I'm more, most familiar with, but it's all, you know, single pane. Like nineteen fifties windows really do need to put. Uh, you know, energy efficient windows in if we're going to do H vac, right?
Middle school is the same way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, and, um, just to go back to, uh, Dr. Kane, I believe she used the lion's grant. Um, it's my understanding, I mean, I'm on, just being in my second year, um, but the lion's capital grant, um, where I've been informed is available. Uh, every other year or every two years, um, so it should be coming up around this, uh, summer, spring. The last time we got it, it was about approximately two hundred and fifty thousand, um, just to put a, uh, a price tag. And how often that grant comes around, um, again, just going into my second year. Um, you know, I, um, it's something that's on my radar, um. Anticipating and certainly, uh, Joe and myself have talked about connecting, uh, uh, should and when that comes available as well.
And. But same thing as this. You need architecture, you need, you need the engineer.
And, and that's all I'm bringing up is like, like if we're going to do H vac, we should definitely move the windows down on that priority list. And get whatever we done, done with that, you know, make sure we're. Not too far.
Yeah, and, and just to pay. Yeah, and and just to piggyback off of that, I mean, that's one of the things we run into is like the Lions Capital Grants a perfect example. Um, you get notification of a spring that like what the possible award is, and then you have to spend it. Um, by uh August thirtieth, so you have a short window, so like certain projects are limited if you don't have like, uh, um. As far as the work of us, the scope of work to move forward. So sometimes you're limited as far as projects that you can put together in that. That short of a timeframe, um, so something like this, like if you did have something together allows you to move quicker. On some projects that you maybe prefer to prioritize.
So that that gets us to the question of where's the money gonna come from? Well, the the. FY twenty-two numbers are closed out and the Board of Ed has returned. Patrick, is it five hundred and eighteen thousand?
Uh, correct.
Okay, so if if we know that we need somewhere between three and four hundred thousand to do the engineering for the these two, these projects on each of the three schools. Uh, at least to start. We also know that there was money that was appropriated for education that had been returned that. Wouldn't even be equal to the total amount that they returned here, so I would be comfortable basically turning around and returning the money towards. Um, a project that benefits the the school buildings. Is that where we're going to put the money to begin?
Yeah. Um, Patrick, we're for um, the HPA system, um, during the pandemic, there was a lot of uh concern by parents throughout the nation. Um, that the air quality was very poor. Does this require, um, this grant require anything additional other than a normal HPA system to meet those? Standards that they were supposed to be putting in place for air quality within the schools?
Um, I don't know if I understand the the question, question, um. Are you at?
I mean, if if the grant requires anything specific. Like basically on on COVID and the concern back there in the COVID in the circulation of the air, if there's something that's additionally required by them in order to obtain the grant.
Um, not that, not that I've read, I mean, it has, I mean, it it does have to improve air quality. Um, like it, like I'm looking at right here, it's to install, replace, upgrade, heating, ventilation or air conditioning. Um, uh, certainly, I, you know, um, there is an application process. Um, so they will be looking at specific criteria, I'm s- um, I'm sure like. Like any type of grant, there's like a scoring mechanism to it, so if you have something that's also improving their quality. Um, you know, that improves your chances of getting the grant um approved, but nothing specifically says it has to do that. Um, but I'm sure it's one to look for.
But this grant is strictly for. Air quality or is it also going to um do anything for the heat issue that people were complaining on?
No, it, um, you can utilize it to upgrade heating, so it's a, again, it's, it can be used to for installation, replacement. Upgrading and that includes both heating and air conditioning as well as van uh ventilation. Um, but it doesn't say it has to be all those, it's like an or.
Okay. And then one question for Joe, the current um. Upgrades that were done already to the schools, will the new system if approved? Um. Will they tie it together or will they be separate?
The other boiler.
Um, over at the middle school, you said there was no, things are put on the roof?
Yeah, we uh, we, I mean, we had a few rooms that had some AC, so we had um the health room, the computer room, the library. Um, uh, there was a. A small office area, um, prior to that. I don't know if it was a, um. Uh, like within the last few years, obviously, we've added uh the auditorium and cafeteria. Um, at the middle school, but these would be independent units.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, I wanted to make sure we didn't waste money previously. So he answered my question, I just want to make sure that.
And 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 the upside that Dr. Trudgert's invention is, this is, this will be backup for our boiler systems, I mean. The high school boiler was replaced. Two thousand. Six, it's between two thousand five and two thousand seven was about. About, I think I finished in two thousand seven, so. You know, I mean. You know, granted the middle school and we're having the, well, we had an issue with. A quarter or a a third of the boiler here across the street.
Yep.
Which does ninety percent of the school outside of the module, so. The the there is a bonus here for us and and you know. We can get the money, the upside here too is is whatever we don't use, if it goes into like an engineering fund. We could turn around and then we can go for the windows or the next project and, you know, vice versa, that's what you all want to do with that.
But the bottom line, if we don't, if we don't uh move forward with the engineering work, then we're gonna lose grab money. Um, which part will we see? The cost to be prepared when it comes to, so, I'm good.
Other questions or comments? What's your pleasure?
We'll make a motion that we um accept the proposal I presented um by utilizing the uh. Refund of five hundred and eighteen thousand, um. In order to accomplish the engineering.
Let's just. So so that that might be a little high.
Not to exceed um the recommended three hundred thousand, is that what it was, three hundred thousand?
I would, I would just stay safe and say four hundred thousand, just to be safe and.
I'll amend that to four hundred thousand.
Is there a second? Second, maiden second, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, opposed? Thank you, Dr. Trudgert, appreciate you tuning in.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, appreciate the flexibility again. Uh, thank you, Joe, appreciate it.
Mr. Saurav. Yeah, you're up, thanks in the batting word. Um, so you guys all recall that we we talked about um. The best way moving forward to make sure we're disposing of town property, uh, or town assets rather, so. Uh, Joe brought us his his inventory that he wanted to dispose of, and he's got a. Um, update as to where that stands, as well as a policy moving forward that we can conceive of being at.
So here is, and I apologize last minute, but uh, it's been a little hectic. It is a draft. Uh. And if you have any questions on it, we can go over it. This time or next time, as far as. What we did a couple of weeks ago. You'll be happy to know, and I was ecstatic to know that we sold. All, everything we were selling. Obviously, at the price we set, it was non-negotiable. But the air conditioners. Are still sitting on the air conditioning units. I don't know if uh, well, it's gonna snow. Well, that 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 didn't help, so I don't know if we just wait and, you know, maybe we have a second round in the spring. Maybe, you know, I mean, we're not asking a lot of money for them. If you want me to reduce the price, I, you know, I mean, two hundred dollars for an air conditioner, I think. Probably will sell in the spring or closer to the summer, we can just wait. That being said, we did raise. Sixty-eight thousand dollars. That will. Very much offset the price of our new backhoe that I got the price for today. Um. That plus. The um. The savings on the loader. Leaves me about thirty thousand dollars shy. But I think. Once I sell the backhoe we have. We'll pretty much own the backhoe for nothing. But we'll have a brand new piece of equipment that will last us another, that one lasted us twenty years for no cost. No out-of-pocket cost, I guess. So I'm I'm excited about that. Um. It worked out very well. Uh, we did run into a little glitch on the. The titles, we don't have titles, we have certificate of origins. We didn't fill out the right paperwork, but we're working through that with people who bought the vehicles. And. Everybody who bought it understood it and I actually just received another car from the police station that. I want to do a little market research, but uh, I'll come back to you maybe in another meeting or two and put that out there. People. People like this stuff. I'm amazed. Because some of it, I was just gonna recycle.
Well, I'm amazed how quickly it all went, because I called the next morning after, I gave one day, and then I called the next morning and. What I wanted was already sold.
Yeah, the 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 stuff amazingly, you know what? Uh, it it pains me to say this, but. Sometimes Facebook is a very good tool, sometimes, very small amount of time. But it worked out very well for us, we put it out there, um. People are still reaching out to see if we have anything, so I think we've created a nice buzz where. You know, we're, we'll, we'll basically just, you know. Not sit on some of this stuff. I mean, a couple of the cars we've been sitting on for over a year. And, you know, we can get right out of it, put it right back in our fund and be able to fund stuff. Yeah, and, you know. The run.
So that's uh disposition of the last list of assets that that he brought forward, I think, two meetings ago.
Yes.
Um, and uh, we have a draft of the um asset disposal policy. Um. You guys have any com- uh, any comments to incorporate into that, welcome them. Uh, we can look forward to this tonight, you guys can look it over over the next couple of weeks and put it on the agenda for the first. Don't try to, or just, so hold on, hold on, we'll bring it back on the first and um. Uh, we'll either adopt any comments or outside of the fight. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Make that, you're welcome.
Okay, where am I? Right, so. The Greater Together Community Fund Advisory Committee has made another round of awards. Um, and. One of the recipients is the American Legion. A condition of them being able to accept funding from the the. Um. Advisory committee is that they need to have a financial agent, fiduciary agent, we've done this for other groups in the past. Probably will not be the only request that we get this cycle. Um, it is the only one external to an existing border commission that I'm aware of at this point in time. Um, but they approached us and wanted to know if we would be willing to be their their. Uh, fiduciary agent so that they could accept the grant and work on their roof project. Fellas a bunch, well, uh, we've done this several times in the past, but I wanted to bring it to you guys so you could uh take a look at it and let me know if you're comfortable doing that or not.
And then not apply voting, Jake Gray.
They was up.
I don't have a comment. We've not even casted, I said, since that, so, it's just, and I don't have a problem.
Let's. Have a motion. The Town Act is the the financial agent or fiduciary agent for the. Uh, American her- American Legion to receive the community, Eastwinds or Greater Together Community Fund, funds.
Make a motion that we. Um, authorize the total of the town to act as fiduciary for the. Five thousand dollar grant reward to the American Legion, um, from the Eastwinds or Greater Together Community Fund Advisory.
Second.
Motion has been made in the second, um, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Oppose? I would ask that we table agenda item ninety until after executive session.
Will we table agenda item ninety until after executive session?
Second, motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Oppose? Uh, we did nine E runs and nine F, which is tax refunds.
I move to approve the tax refunds totaling one thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, any discussion? All in favor?
I, I.
Oppose? So carry. Uh, okay, so speaking of grants, the Eastwinds Arts and Culture Committee has received a grant from the Department of Economic and Community Development. Uh, it is called. It's called, I don't have the document, this is, it's just a contract. Um, it's a supporting arts grant, it's the the state connect supporting arts grant, it's a thousand dollars, it's just for operational costs or. For operational expenses incurred by the um. Uh, Eastern Arts and Culture Commission, uh, but because it's receiving town money, I need authority from you guys to sign acceptance from the state.
I'll make a motion that we accept. Did that again, whatever he said.
The supporting arts.
I'm sorry, it's put on, on the supporting art. Somebody want to finish that?
The Supporting Arts Grant from the Department of Economic and Community, we all.
Okay.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Oppose? Here, okay. Um, it is that time of year again where we need to start talking about the parameters that we're gonna ask boards, commissions, departments. Uh. What they would like to see, or or what we would like to see them present to us in terms of their budget submissions. Um, at the Board of Finance meeting last night, I talked to that board about what I see as some of the particular. Uh, struggles we will have this year, and it's gonna be kind of a a convergence of of. Really trying events. We're dealing with uh. Forty-year-high inflation. We're dealing with interest rates that are not far behind. Um, and we're also dealing with a rebound at a point in time when the housing market has been at extreme highs over the last five years. As I said to the Board of Finance last night, and we'll we'll be coming before our board on December first, is. We're gonna have to have a pretty um creative conversation around how we're gonna tackle rebound and what our options are. Um, but as we're required by charter to put our budget guidelines out by December first, so. Um, I need to hold you guys without the benefit of having that information as to where you see. Uh, the town budget going in the next fiscal year and what you want those parameters to. Represent in the budget. The Board of Finance's representation, Charlie was the man who's been backing up here. Um, they were basically saying uh status quo, uh, you know, basically a uh nothing new approach. Um. I personally think that's a little too uh. Too rosy, I think it's gonna be a more difficult year than that. Um, but. I throw it to you guys so that I can. I hear what you have to say, and then I'll put a draft in the letter, so that we can vote on it and argue.
That's our first. Um, I think this part did, in my opinion, I think this part did a great job um last year for just to make sure that um we. Did it in a way um that. Uh, the business in the residence for the town um came through with a zero-based budget. Um, last year, no tax increase. I know I just got a statement from my bank um saying that because of um the Expro account, um. Been overpaid into because of the tax line, um, they refunded me um money, um. So I know mine went down, may not be, but everybody else, but I think we did that. If I recall, we could let me if I'm wrong, because we knew there might be a problem looking for. Sometimes acted differently than we did, reacted on the side of caution to make sure that. We knew because we knew that was coming, you always know when to be valid, there's gonna be some um influx of something um that's gonna affect certain people. Um, so I think we're in a good spot moving forward. I don't think we're in a position where you can say zero base because we know all know with inflation, the cost of anything is going up. So even if we don't purchase a pencil. Everything's gonna cost you more uh in order to operate the towns. I don't think a zero-based budget will do the town any good. We're far behind now. And growth in this town, we're far behind in improvements, um, as we alluded to earlier, our windows are. At the schools are very much outdated, um. We put projects and we move them forward and we move them forward and we never accomplish things that need to be done. But recognizing that we have the air on the side of good judgment, we don't want to waste funding because we know some families are gonna struggle moving forward. Oil's going up, gas going, all that, you guys, I don't have to repeat that, you guys all know that. But I don't think with the contractual increases and raises for. People that work in town, um, we can't do anything with that two percent pull that we have in the town charter. It's gonna cost something with a rebound going forward, um. But I don't think we can say we're gonna do a zero-based budget this year, I don't think that's pre-urestic and I don't think that's fair to call that very true, so that's my opinion.
I was gonna say we need to build a zero-based budget. Yeah, and I'm I'm just thinking. I guess when I say zero.
I guess when I say zero-based budget, I thought I'm thinking the philosophy is we're not assuming that anything's staying that was there last time, right? I mean, we do have fixed cost. Like you're saying, you know, that's obviously going to be the starting point for everybody's budget, but. Think we need to, you know, everybody needs to look at, you know, not just making an assumption because we had it last year, we have it this year. And you know, maybe we need it, but I think we have to start that philosophy.
I'm not saying buy anything new. I'm just saying we have one. Of everybody in town, we got one. Um, part we have one, especially we have one, then you can't lay them off. Uh, so, and they got contracts, so it's going to cost money. That's what I'm referring to. Those are fixed costs that we have no control of. The cost of electricity, it's a fixed cost. We have no control of. Um, insurance, we have no control of uh, things that are required by the uh, police department and the fire department that require that we have. Um, different tests done, different shots taken. We have no control over what that costs. We have no control with the gap. Um, that's coming in. Who knows what gas is going to cost? Who knows what the oil is going to cost? Those are fixed costs that we have no control over, and we know they're going to go up.
So are are you saying? You're saying uh, contractual contractual increases all?
I'm I'm not saying contractual increases only. I'm saying that we have to be smart enough to know that there's going to be costs that are going to go up. That we right now are blind by it, but we know it's going to go up. That all has to be factored in before you can make a decision to say zero. Where are you going to take? Those added expenses, where are we going to take it from? And who's going to be harmed by it? You know, I don't have a problem saying, okay. That fifty-year-old piece of equipment you have, you're going to keep that fifty-year-old equipment and you can use it for another five years. I don't have a problem with that. Um, but I have a problem if we sell ourselves too short for a fall. Because the last thing you want um, next year is to come up and say we need to matter in communication, because we need to matter in communication for that. Um, because we must actively, there's going to be some error because you don't know what's going to happen out there. Before all we know. Who shows could be empty next month? Um, I just went to a restaurant today and they said they couldn't get lettuce. Now, that's sad. Um, so it's going to be a trying year, especially with this rebound because we don't know what effect it's going to have yet. Um. So with that and everything else.
You didn't mention um, insurance, but. I think we're expecting a double-digit increase.
I I'm skeptical about that till I really see any of the numbers because the broker that that we have on contract missed the mark so badly last year that. Until we actually get the numbers from the state, I I can't.
Generally out there, though, it is.
Yeah, I mean, last year they told us between um. Zero and five percent, but I expect that it's going to be zero. So budget five and then be in good shape, and then it came in at ten and a half. So they lost unlike weather band numbers kind of bad. Um. And we don't, Patrick and I don't even have a meeting set up with insurance carrier until we come to summer anyway.
Yeah, it's kind of hard right now to sit here and say, what should we do? We haven't seen any numbers.
You know, not not having given you Sarah and Charlie an opportunity yet. I mean, you pegged inflation. On the money last year. You you were the only one, or at least the first one. That I heard saying that was going to be a problem, that was going to be a problem, and it was way before it was a problem. So kind of hoping the Oracle of Rice Street has some good news.
Possible research.
Uh, I mean, I agree that with Marie that she said we've made a lot of progress and we don't want to halt that and. But I think we really need to be cautious. I think we need to also look at a lot of departments are budgeting. For things and returning a lot of money back to the town. I think we need to ask the departments, how much money did you return last year? What, and if they aren't using. You know, we're taxing people and they're not using what is in their budget, then we need to cut it this year if they have any, if they have a track record of not using it for the past few years. Um, I'm kind of um. Forward with just fixed costs. Um, and. If there is a program that they budgeted for that they're not utilizing, that we have to be open to possibly. Cutting it. Um. But I mean, I also at the same point agree that we've. Made a lot of progress. We're we're moving forward in town and that hasn't happened for many years and. But we need to be cautious as to how we do that going forward. It's kind of where I am.
Sure, so I agree a lot with what's been said, and I have more questions and I have a opinion on what we should do. And. Number one, if. If. Evales have gone up so so much and so substantially. Doesn't that in turn increase our grand list?
Yes.
The same way. So that in turn. Should decrease our mill rate to our taxpayer. That is what will happen. Okay, so yes, your house value went up. But potentially your mill rate should also go down. Therefore, shouldn't there be some little findings there as far as money to the tax? Or bill to the taxpayer, I should say?
Yes, there there typically there is and there will be in this case too. Um, at our meeting on December first, the um contractor that we actually did, the representative from Vision. Will be here to talk to us about the eval. So you can ask all of those very good questions and you'll get a an educated answer on them right then and there on spot. I think the answer is going to be the devils in the details. There's nuance in all of that. Um, but those are. Very good points and they're they're very. Worth discussing when we get together again in two weeks.
And then my other big question is, how much control do you have over the rebound as far as? What what that does and, you know, what the town. Either benefits or doesn't benefit from that. What control do we have in? You know, what they've said, you know, if a house is said to be worth a certain amount, what was, what can we do to change that?
Very little, uh, but not nothing. There there are some things we could consider the the prospects of phasing. Consider the the prospect of asking the legislature to allow us to defer. Um, both of which are going to have to be part of the conversation. Um, but you can get, again, we can get some, it really, I'll make this the major part of our meeting on the first so that we're digging in on um. Real-time information from people who are change professionals.
Yeah, I understand that we have, you know, obviously. The price of fuel, heat, electricity, ever source just announced today they're going to try and do a forty-eight percent rate pay. Um, whether that goes through, we'll see, but we got to look at that as well. You know, electricity is already up. Looking like it's going to be up even more. Um, so we're going to be faced with those, obviously contractual issues, insurance. You know, all those things are going to hit us and.
Electric won't hit us. Electric will hit our constituents, but it won't hit the town, but because we've got a four-year contract that we're in year one.
Okay, um. But nonetheless, you know, it's it's a factor and.
We did forty months. Well, it's multi-year. Well, I'm sure it was, we're near one, we're a little ahead.
But but at any rate, you know, people are all going to feel the pinch. So to go up on their taxes is going to, you know, obviously. People are going to like that as well. It's it's already a pressure I know for a lot of people, so just with price of heating. You know, food and and gasoline, so. I I, yeah, I think. Sarah's right, you know, if you've got a track record of. Giving us an inflated budget and you're not spending it, you're going to see, you should see some serious cuts. And projects or new things or. Um, you know. Head projects that we're going to have to, you know, put the foot down on those. But again, I I do agree, we've made a lot of progress. A lot of good things have happened. In East Windsor in the last. Four or five years, and it would be great. For that to continue and move on. Um, certainly the effects of what this board has done are still to come in, you know, in the future. But if we have a good budget forward this year, then that can continue. You know, you can borrow it, so. Even assets. And I'd like to see.
Vision. On the email, going back to your question, because I didn't so understood what you were driving at. I I thought you were asking on the reveal of something we could do if we don't agree with it. Um. Do you think because of the economy and the way it is right now? That. Putting that forward just the way it is? Um, or should we be blocking um? Big powers and say that capital thing, um, yes, it's a requirement every ten years, but because of. The economy and how bad it is right now, um, can that be postponed until? Two years down the road or years down the road? Um.
That can be done through what's called Special Act. So there's um. There is a public act and there's a special act or two different types of legislation. Special act can create uh. Town by town or region by region or or specific carve-outs that exempt municipalities from certain conditions. Um, there was a bill last year that allowed for certain municipalities, I think there were four of them. Um, to delay rebound as a result of the, what is effectively the COVID economy and housing boom. Um, so that is something that, you know, we will be talking about requesting. Um. And it's going to, you know, I mean, once we have all of the information and I don't have it yet. Once you have all of the information, then you guys. Will have to be a very active participant in those discussions. So what I'm hearing is. We're we're sympathetic to fixed costs. We're not excited about new ideas, and if there have been areas that have been, or budget lines that have been returned in the past. We'd want to know about those because. They're going to be revisited pretty aggressively this cycle. Is that a fair? Encapsulation of the comments?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that is very helpful. That is. Okay, so um.
Just one more thing, well, it's broke my mind. When you were pointing to um. The no rate versus the tax rate. Got to take it one step further. We've been fortunate. Um, our tax collector was able to collect taxes this year, which. I'm very surprised we've got over, what was it, ninety-six percent? Um. Tax uh, collection. I'm not sure we can count on that. Um, next year. So that's something that I would take under consideration. Um, because we know part of our population um, is under a certain income level. Um. And I'm sure if we're suffering, that if this is going to start suffering, um, so there's going to be lost in jobs that those that are willing to work. Um, but we have to take that all under consideration, I think.
That's actually what the Fed is aiming for, is unemployment.
I know.
It's a weird system. Yep. Okay. Thank you for your feedback. I I do appreciate it. Um, so I can just comment in the course. I don't have very much um, this time because we met just last week and Friday was a holiday. Um, but I want to start off by offering my thanks to the folks in our community who have made charitable donations for the Thanksgiving turkeys and gift card drive that we do each year. Through your generosity, this year we were able to provide for all of the needy families on our list using all private donations. We're still looking for sponsors for our sponsor child holiday program with about twenty kids still in the sponsorship. So if you're interested, please call social services at sixteen-three-two-four-three-zero. On Tuesday, a recount was conducted on question two from last week's election due to the closeness of the outcome. Question two would have authorized the town to move forward with a renovation and expansion of the Scott Hall building. To be repurposed as the town's multi-generational community center. After the recount was concluded, final margin showed the question uh, was was defeated by a margin of twenty-three votes. Out of nearly four thousand guests. Tonight, we're selecting recognized Mr. Arts, uh, Mr. Kyle Arts for the good work he's done through raising funds for cancer charities. Um, as I said earlier, he's a local eighth grader who's raised over eight thousand dollars through October saves. Top fundraiser, that is, highest fundraiser in the country and personally responsible for one point five percent of what was raised for that organization internationally. Um. Saturday, uh, at ten in the morning, the town will officially rename the park alongside the Stanton River at the base of Cemetery Road and Wall Road. In honor of Master Sergeant Richard Sherman. Mr. Sherman is an original member of the town's American Heritage River Commission and has been steward of the Stanton River for more than two decades. All are welcome to attend the commemoration. Finally, I want to extend our most heartfelt congratulations to our own Samantha Sherret, uh, who is our recreation lead in our Parks and Rec Department. Sam was recognized by her peers around the state as the Connecticut Recreation and Parks Association's R. Peter Ledger Young Professional Award winner. Uh, Sam will be honored at the CRPA annual meeting on Tuesday. I thank her for her continued dedication to our Parks and Recreation Program this year in town. Marie, what do you have?
I have absolutely nothing. Had a part uh, part of meeting last night, um, that I lost track of the time, part of this all this. So that's been in my dining room for a little over a week and a half. Um. And it's too late to go through it, but it gets right, maybe, so I have my, that's one thing that. Um, um. The turnout, um, just because we elaborated, it's not a liaison, I have a minute. Um. The election turnout um, was good this year. Um, which I would praise. Um. The votes were close. We did the recount, um, which if I never have to do a recount. Again, in my lifetime, um, it's fine by me. Um. But cooperation from everybody on our recount um. Was phenomenal. So, all three, I'll thank all those people that gave in the last minute because of the short period of time that things done. I'll be very much. Uh, you know, probably take a month for my body to recover, but um, we're good.
Miss Sadie made made comparisons at the uh, Housing Authority last night.
Yes, I agree.
Yep, Sadie went to that one, LA County Water Business Science. A thousand kids were everywhere.
The only thing I want to clarify, though, um, um. Voting, um. On the new form of communication, which I don't agree with, I don't. Respond. Um, somebody commented that uh. Deputy First Lieutenant, this one is fine. Uh, the deputy first left in no name, um, signed, um. The paperwork um, for the state um, to verify the voting. Um, the deputy first, what person, who's myself. Did not sign it under that capacity. I signed it under the capacity of head moderator. Um. Hired by the Register of Voters to do that one since I'm head moderator, not. So I want to make sure that's clear, um, that people get the right information. It was under head moderator. That doesn't make a difference.
Sir.
Okay, I did have uh, Parks and Recreation Commission meeting on Monday night. There are a lot of upcoming events being put on by Parks and Rec throughout the holiday season. The North Pole Connect with calls from Santa will be on December fourteenth. The torchlight parade will be held on December seventeenth at five thirty P M with activities following at the Broadbrook Fire Department. And there will also be an open skate at Enfield Twin Rings on December twenty-eighth. There is also a Santa's mailbox outside of the Broadbrook Fire Department. Where children in third and fourth grade can write letters to Santa and they will receive a response. After seven years, the Panther Plunge will be back on February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. And the event will benefit the East Windsor Fuel Bank. If you wish to sponsor this event, please reach out to Samantha Sherret at eight six zero six two seven six 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 two. Or she can also be emailed for more information. The Department of Public Works has begun winterizing the parks, including the dog park. So attendees must bring their own water at this time. Park Director Melissa Maltese gave a seasonal review, which included a three-year comparison of East Windsor Park. Total revenue this year was back to pre-COVID standards. Um, gate receipts, pavilion rentals and snack bar receipts were higher this year over the past three years. Total revenue generated was thirty-three thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. And there were thirty-one pavilion rentals and fifteen of those were from residents this season. After-school programs are back up and running and functioning like they did pre-COVID. Job applications for summer employment will be going online this year. And CPR training will be in-house on this year, which can also be an income generator as this will eventually be offered to the public. You remember we had included that training in our budget. Um, and three potential playground designs for the ADA compliant playground at East Windsor Park were distributed amongst the commissioners. I do have those here. Any of the board members would like to see. And just wishing you all and your families a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Sure. Yes, uh, November seventh, I attended the Wells Point Fire Commission meeting. Uh, in that meeting, the board approved the new bid contract procedure. Um, and also approved a big contract for snow removal for the year. Uh, the Fire Marshal reported twenty-four inspections being completed on the warehouse point side of town. And the Department Chief reported sixty-three calls for service during the month of October. Uh, he also reported that the administrative building is near completion and they hope to have a final inspection. Around the end of November with a moving date of uh, beginning of December. On November sixteenth, last night, I attended the Board of Finance meeting. A lot of this week, we're hardly putting this. On November sixteenth last night, I attended the board of finance meeting, a lot of this week from our department in this meeting. Uh Board heard and made a transfer request that had already been presented and moved forward by the Board Selectmen. Uh this request was to cover replacement of in-dash police car cameras and body cams. Uh the current ones the police department is, are using are reaching their expiration. And grants currently available that would need to look thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar savings. Also in that meeting for Selectmen, we're posting feedback on letters like we just talked about for uh budget parameters. And um let's see what else happened in that meeting, tax collections right on schedule, good standing, forty-eight point six percent for twenty-one million in revenue has been already collected. And the board of ed reports, um all info needed was submitted for the audit. And the return of five hundred and eighteen um from the budget year of twenty-one twenty-two, which we I'm bothered with, judging you to home for. Uh upcoming, the annual stuff cruiser event is happening November twenty-sixth at eight A M to four P M.
So I'm prepared. We only have one meeting uh since our last meeting and I was unable to attend, so I do not have a report.
Um we're on a public participation, this is public's second opportunity to address members of the Board of Selectmen. I'll first start with people who are here in the room and then turn anybody who's with us online. If there are anybody in the room who would like to address the Board of Selectmen, please state your name and address. Anybody online who would like to address the Board of Selectmen? Okay, we will have a brief executive session uh to include the five of us, um we will come out of executive session and take up agenda item nine D. Uh grab a motion to go into executive session.
We will, we go to executive session at eight thirteen.
For a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are in executive session at eight thirteen P M. It is eight thirty-eight, we're out of executive session, we're going to refer to the call on the agenda and take up agenda item nine D, selection and executive search firm for Chief of Police. Um per our town's bid policy, um if the cost of a, a project is going to be over five thousand dollars, under twenty thousand dollars, we can get three quotes. Uh I have reached out to three different firms who have expertise in executive recruitment. One of them is uh Randy Frank Consulting LLC, she's out of Wallenford, Connecticut and Louisville, Kentucky. One of them is Gov HR USA, they're out of the uh greater Chicago area. And another one is Strategic Government Resources, which is, I believe, out of Texas. Um Randy Frank Consulting came in at twenty-two thousand dollars, which is over our uh uh threshold that would require a bid. Um Gov HR USA came in at twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars, which is again over that twenty thousand dollar number. And Strategic Government Resources came in at nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars. Um so we have, we have a qualifying uh quote that is within the scope of the town's bid policy. We can either accept that or we can actually do a full on our, our, what's the pleasure?
Um I would make a motion that we would actually accept this quote. So I'll make a motion, we accept the uh quote from Strategic Government Resources and authorize the first selectmen to sign the agreement for executive recruitment services for police chief between SGR and the town of Eastman.
Second.
Made in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And there that tomorrow, thank you folks. No further business to come before the board, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Will that we turn at eight forty P M?
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Made and second, uh all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at eight forty P M. Bye, bye.